All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, February 21st, 2023 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I don't have any announcements this evening. I don't know if anybody else does on the board. We're all good there. Is there anybody here for anything that's not currently listed on our agenda? All right. Seeing is none. We'll go right into the first item on our agenda, which is to vote on Chapter 61B Walnut Street.
I'm going to recuse myself on this one.
Absolutely. And Sue, right? Come on on.
Good morning, Sue.
Yeah, we would like to, we have issues with the way it's recognized. Like when you reviewed the 61, we wanted to be in touch. We've worked very hard on open space and things like that. And we wonder why we were excluded from participating in it.
That's a fantastic question.
Probably not excluded, probably forgotten to do, to consult you, I think, is probably the...
Yeah, we sent a letter that said that we wanted to be notified. And it was after the fact that the meeting had already happened.
You guys had discussed it in executive session and voted on it in executive as well.
Is that always the case, that it's an executive session when something's working on the 61?
Well, it has to do with purchasing land.
That's 61?
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't remember that being the case in the past. I've come in and talked and appealed before to, you know, say this would be a good parcel to cut through to conservation land or something. And put down because we're just an advisory committee, and that's also part of an issue, which we work hard and we feel like we should be listened to as well.
So the letter we received, was it after?
It was in your...
So we read that. I remember reading that.
I wasn't at January 17th meeting, so executive, so...
Lisa has the timeline.
Lisa Malzinski, 60 Oak Street. I'm a member of the Open Space Committee, but the material I'm sharing here was compiled by myself, and it was not discussed at a meeting. So I just want to make that clear.
It's your group. Yeah, it was not discussed in open space.
Right, because we have not had a meeting.
Right.
This is the timeline of this particular request to take a piece of property out of Chapter 61B protection on Walnut Street.
Okay.
Yes. As Sue said, so the second request, the revised request came in, excuse me, on December 12th. The Open Space Committee then met on December 20th. We discussed the agenda item and wrote a letter to the effect that we wanted to recommend that the board pursue taking the property, as is their right, and that we wanted to come before the board to discuss it. That letter was sent on December 28th. You can see, January 9th, the Conservation Commission reviewed the request, recommended not to exercise the right to pursue the parcel. On February 7th, the Board of Selectmen wrote a letter to the applicant stating that the board would not exercise its right. So we were told that the board, if you jump down to February 13th, we were told that the board met on January 17th, went into executive session, and discussed the matter. We were told, come in on the 21st to talk about it, when in fact, today I found out there was a letter already written to the owner, the proponent, the applicant, that said action had already been taken, and the board's supported it.
Which, did the planning board vote on?
The planning board's never discussed it.
And it said it's never discussed?
I can't even find the minutes.
It said it's CC does, which actually got it changed.
Right. So what are we doing here tonight? It's an agenda item to take a vote on something that's already been acted on?
Did we send a letter?
A letter was sent after you voted on it in executive.
In executive session.
I talked to town council, and they said to have it in open session, the vote from executive.
That makes sense that we would have gone into executive session to discuss...
Interest in real property.
Yeah.
But you should not have voted.
Yeah.
The vote should have been taken in open session.
Right.
So that was put back out into the open session agenda tonight, and you can hear from anybody you want to hear from.
Yeah. And we're not bound by...
It's not after the fact. They're going to vote in open session.
You've already written a letter to the applicant saying that you voted not to take any action.
But you're still within the timeframe.
So the...
Basically, you're getting a do-over.
Yeah.
And this is your opportunity to be heard.
Did you tell the applicant that?
We'll have to if the board changes their mind, but they may not.
Where's the process here? Because in fact, a Chapter 61 request is not anything to negotiate. The first step is to say, yes, we're interested, or no, we're not. You have to meet that purchase and sale agreement. You don't get to change that.
No, but the board...
The board can change its mind if it wants to within the deadline, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
No, I'm sorry. You don't get to negotiate with the purchase and sale.
There is no negotiation.
Exactly. So why executive session?
Because we're talking about whether it's a good investment for the town, has to do with the spending the town's money. And when it's about real estate, that's one of the criteria to be in executive session.
And can't you invite committees and other experts in to discuss during executive session?
You can, but they don't have to.
So then we could join later and be out of executive session and discuss the land purchase, or do we...
So, once again, the board went into executive session and should have discussed their strategy to either buy or not buy this piece of property coming out of 61A, which is their prerogative. They had letters from two committees that put this item on their agenda, open space and conservation. They discussed it in executive session. They voted. They should not have voted. Vote should have been taken in open session. So for all intents and purposes, that vote isn't really valid. So, yeah, you are here tonight with basically an open slate. The board still has your letter. They still have Concom's letter. The other two committees have chosen not to speak on the matter, but this would be your opportunity to make your case if you think your letter wasn't complete, or if you want to have an open dialogue with the board on the record in open session.
The planning board never put it on its agenda to discuss...
The planning board chair may have determined that it's in her prerogative not to put it on for action.
My point is, there was no discussion about the property, period. So the input was to this board was basically no and yes. There was no nuance about or argument for or against the qualities of the property, which we would have brought to the table had we been invited.
And still can't.
No, what I would like to request is that we start over. Because you've got plenty of time. You've got till April 15th, more or less. You've got plenty of time. Start over. Because this is a travesty of the process.
I'd say that. So if there was a miss in executive session, I'll fall on my sword. I'm the one that called for the vote. So that was my mistake. I should have done that in open session. I don't agree with, let's restart the entire process. You know, to Matt's point, we can discuss the parcel this evening here. One of the boards and committees that this would normally go in front of has already opted to say, no, it's not worth the town bidding on. And they're opting to pass or exercise, let it go to whoever wants to go off a private sale. If your group has a compelling argument that you'd like to bring in contradiction to what Concom, the floor is yours.
Except that the rest of our members weren't scheduled to come.
Prepared, but we can tell you what we think, but you know, it's just...
If you'd like, I can put you on, I can move this to the first meeting in March, which would be the first Tuesday in March. Is that ample time to get your board in to discuss the merits? Is that a...
Yeah, we can bring maps. We can show you where the biohazard area is and how ridiculous the location is and...
I have no issues with that whatsoever. But as for the going out of process in executive session, that's on me, not the rest of the board.
We went along with it.
No. I have every interest in listening to what...
And what's in what?
No, I have every interest in listening to you guys. As for us going out of process and voting on that in executive session, that was my bad. I shouldn't have done that.
Suzanne Kane's fault.
So I want to know what you write to, what is the process to write to the owner, to the person who brought this proposal?
It's thrown back into the mix.
You're rescinding your decision?
Well, we have... A decision was taken in executive session, which doesn't have to be, we haven't taken the decision, so we have no formal position.
You wrote a position in a letter that was sent.
That was the letter...
I guess we don't need to keep kicking a dead horse. The letter isn't valid. So you now have a process to come in and be heard on the topic. The board's prerogative. So first of all, the vote they took wasn't appropriate, so it's not binding on them or anyone else. If that needs to be explained, it will be. I just don't know why we, we'll send a letter to the applicant and inform them of the process.
So we're giving you the opportunity to have what you wanted and have another meeting and have your people here, if you'd like.
I'm just questioning this because the applicant couldn't have moved forward already.
No, because there was no official vote for the board.
Reliance upon a faulty foundation.
It says there was an official vote by the board.
Well, if it said that, it's not right.
But it didn't happen in open, right?
It didn't happen in open, so Lisa, it doesn't bind anyone.
Okay, I'm only saying, say that to the applicant.
And I think we've already said that we would.
You're costing them time and money, too.
Great, we'll be in the meeting.
All right.
All right. We have a discussion on the transfer station compactors with the Board of Health and possible votes. And we have our resident pickleball champion, Mr. Skinner.
They haven't watched me play, have they?
That's, your reputation precedes you.
Yeah.
Don't contradict it.
I'm Dick Skinner, 174 South Street. I am a member of the Board of Health, and I am here, as I told Matt, for your counsel, your wisdom, and your money. Not necessarily in that order. The purpose of the discussion is to let you know that we are looking at a potential cost reduction of the transfer station. We had a set of monies identified, calculated out, but this was before COVID. And we decided, so COVID decided for us to go pay attention to saving lives, not saving... So tonight, we're just going to talk about what it is and what we're trying to do. We're looking for what we would guess is a capital expenditure of about $50,000. And for that, you get an annual return of at least $20,000, except for the first year. I have included two charts in your handout. The first chart shows the trends in cardboard and plastic consumption or shipping. And the second chart shows the calculations for the... The current haul of, I'm using the hauler's terms here, the current hauling rate is $180 per big container that leaves the transfer yard. So those are the containers that hold all the recycle and the containers that hold compacted trash. If you're looking at cardboard compacting, you're looking at about a factor of three, meaning you reduce its volume by one, by two-thirds, which means that you are shipping once instead of three times. And the plastic is about a two-to-one reduction.
I have a question.
Yeah?
I think it would be safe to assume, unless they've locked you in, like, is there a contract with the hauling? Because I would assume, like, 24 and 25, that cost per trip is probably going to go up as fuel costs and things like that go up as well.
Probably.
Although it looks in previous years, it stayed pretty static.
And that's the scary part. Right now, we're in a transition zone. We have hit inflation. And diesel costs, for instance, has gone up substantially, and that's what drives the trucks. And we are coming up for a contract renewal.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I might just interject a quick second. So when this haulage contract comes up, the Board of Health negotiates it, but I exercise general oversight as a procurement officer for the town. I've insisted that there would be no fuel surcharge agreed to, nor will there be a fuel discount. So they set the fee for their haulage. That doesn't mean that they won't cream us when they renew and try to make up what they lost. But this $180 is a steady number because it's contractual, and we've said no fuel surcharges.
Thank you.
Looks like a good investment for the town.
Say again?
Say, it looks like a good investment for the town.
We think it's a good investment for the town. And what I'm doing currently is getting a current set of numbers for you to look at. And we're also looking at single-stream recycling. Single-stream means all of the recycling goes in one place and gets compacted. The glass, the metal, cardboard, paper, everything. And then they sort it out at wherever they take this stuff.
Question?
Yeah.
What's the funding source for this capital transaction?
I don't understand.
Was the money coming from?
Where's the money coming from?
The...
$50,000.
From any one of two sources, the Capital Committee, or Matt was talking about an alternate government funding.
All right. So those are your two potential sources. If you want capital from the Capital Committee, you need to apply to the Capital Committee and fill out the paperwork and appear before them. The immediacy of this made it important to have a conversation if it's stack ranks.
Oh, it doesn't make sense. That's a secret question.
Yeah, no. Right.
Thought we had committed all our...
No.
But thought we voted for this. That's on number six.
You haven't done it yet.
Timmy's not getting his ski pants.
You're not?
No.
Oh, man.
So what we're trying to do tonight is just alert you that we're thinking in this direction, and there's a potential expenditure which may influence your future.
How long will it take to get firm numbers on the cost of this, or more current numbers on it?
I'm hoping to get it done within the month.
Okay.
So in summary, we're looking at roughly $50,000, and for that, you get a $20,000 return each year. And potentially that increases.
Would that, is that anticipating stabilizing the fees, the dump fees?
We anticipate that this cost reduction would help prevent future increases.
Yes.
Is it, these containers in the same footprint as the existing...
Roughly. The same as what's being compacted as trash right now.
Yeah.
That footprint.
Do you have power down there, or is it going to be installed?
We have to put in the power, about, at a cost of about $20,000.
Is that included in the 50?
Yes.
Yeah, I guess that's, Mr. Chairman, what is in the 50? What's included? So you just said a power install for 20?
Right.
You don't have to be precise, but are there other...
Concrete on top of the PVC piping, the re-hot top of the whole area, or the area that we dug up, the added breakers up in the control area, but that's under electricity.
Then the compactors themselves, I would guess.
The, no, they're leased.
Oh, they're leased, okay.
Everything in that transfer area is leased, except the guys.
Okay, so the lease would be an annual offset to your savings.
That's all calculated in there.
So do we still have the net? Have you already deducted the lease payments when you say what the town will come out with?
Yeah.
But where? Where on the spreadsheet of the leases?
It's not on there. I mean, none of the expenses are on either sheet.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Possibly you could give town administrator a breakdown of that $50,000, so we could understand what that...
Certainly.
And then whatever the monthly recurring is on the lease.
Yeah, we get a part of that rebound.
You might have it in here, because you've got $19,200 in savings for cardboard. I'm looking at 2025, just because it's at the bottom.
Yeah, but those are not...
And 6750.
Those are the trip costs and the savings on the trip cost.
Right.
The costs of getting there are not anywhere on that page.
Cost of getting there?
The $50,000.
Oh, yeah, that. But your annual lease cost would not be in your upfront capital expenditure. So your upfront capital's 50. So your annual lease, I just, you look at, your total savings is 2250, but if you add the cardboard plus the plastic, it's 25950. So there's a chance that you have a lease of about $5,700 built into this analysis. You just need to show it as separate because it's offsetting, it could escalate. But that's, that's actually really, if that is a net savings, and the payback would be two and a half years, that's a slam dunk in anybody's book.
Anything else I can do for you?
I think it's a good idea to work, work in that deeper.
I will get you better numbers, and then we can make a better decision.
That would work.
All set?
All set.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Skinner.
Anyone who wants to do pickleball, we can do that, too.
Oh, I hear your fears. All right. So DCR land acquisition notice and possible votes. Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. My name's Sean Preventer, and I'm the Land Protection Specialist for the Southeast Region. And I'm here to answer any questions you folks might have, and I have a better map. I watched your online video from the last meeting.
That's exactly what we were asking for.
Can I? That helps.
You're the only one that gets...
It's my home, Preventer.
You're absolved.
It's not violently different than your Exhibit A, but...
Yeah. Different enough?
It's got lot lines on it, it's a little bit clearer.
So it's a landlocked piece north of Ridge Trail, right at the northern tip of the forest. No frontage.
Is it surrounded by conservation, by DCR land, or...
Only to the south.
Only to the south?
Correct.
So I'm just picking up.
Yeah.
It looks like the red parcel, is it? So it looks like the south and west is DCR land.
We're, you know, just concerned if it knocks out, or impacts any developable property, but apparently...
DCR approached the landowner, or did the landowner...
You know, I thought that question might come up. I was just trying to remember, because I honestly don't remember. I do send out letters, and this has been, I've been speaking with this gentleman for some time, but oftentimes we get approached as well. And I'm being perfectly honest, I can't remember which way it was. Something tells me that I got a call from the former park supervisor that said that he wanted to reach out. I'd have to check it out.
Is it a narrow access to that bigger piece? That's it?
It looks like access, but Lot 9.
There's a narrow access that comes around this lot.
Yeah, that crazy lot line? Yeah. That's the only way, that's the only...
You say that's Ridge Trail?
Uh, correct.
Pretty close to Ridge Trail.
I can't think of anything.
It's a pretty steep slope up. I don't know if you know the Gas Pipeline easement that runs generally north to south?
Well, you don't have access to it. No legal access.
Can helicopter.
Where's 16, is this 16 here?
It's Northwest Main. It runs just alongside the lot, the highlighted lot. Your other map is going to be better help, this one.
Yeah.
This house is between this lot and Northwest Main. It's already developed, and I think there is an approved subdivision on the lot northeast, and the owner was not interested in making laws that develop it.
Looks like a sand pit.
Can we do that to those guys?
It looks like you can get around it to get to the backland.
So there's a lot there, Lot 9? That's this weird thing?
Yeah.
That is actually their access to the street. One has to assume that at one point, the planning board approved it, because that would give them maybe an A and R lot.
The lot is strange.
But good luck with that. It's like the longest, the longest bendiest driveway in this.
You're going to really want to live in the woods.
Trade you personally support for our grant application.
Well, I think, you know, if you want my opinion on that?
Yeah.
The state's really been very helpful to the town of Douglas, and they ask for these routinely. In the past, it was a little bit easier to dig a little bit and say, we want the state to pay attention to us, but the state really is. And as you increase the total amount of land they hold in Douglas, it goes into the formula for pilot funding. So granted, right? 10 acres isn't going to radically affect that.
Probably in the hundreds of dollars.
Right. But, you know, maybe someday pilot will be fully funded, and every 10 acres the state picks up, like this, translates into some kind of money.
And you don't see it impacting any other...
It doesn't really look like it, right?
Any thoughts, Tim?
No, I think... Snake Forests might grow tonight.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Nope. There's no access to it.
Except for by helicopter. Yeah. Any thoughts from the Open Space Committee members that are here?
We like open land, but I'd love to know the parcel number, if you have it.
It's not in...
Yeah, I believe...
Just to update our open space claim.
Well, Commonwealth's been good to us lately. That—that was our main objection in the past, picking up land and blocking development opportunities. Took you to that Becky Owen piece that time. They blocked a lot of—north on 16.
The state has been a much better partner lately.
Yeah.
Take a stab at a motion, if you'd like.
It would be appreciated, sir.
All right. I would make a motion that the board not object to the state's DCR purchasing. Did you say Lot 9 on the Exhibit A?
Yes.
So I think—to be super technical—I think—I remember being corrected on this in the past, so just to bring it to the board's attention, you need to actually read the words in this first rectangle. Not the "I" part, but "the." Department of Conservation and Recreation may—see that part?
Yeah.
And to—to announce that, and if you wish to take a vote, you can take a vote. But it's actually reading this.
We did that last night.
You don't have to read it.
Am I right?
I believe you're right. We're actually asking for two things—the waving...
The waiver, in the second box.
And the signature of the public announcement.
So you would have to vote the second box, because that authorizes you to sign a waiver.
All right. So two separate motions. Gotcha. So the Department of Conservation and Recreation may acquire an interest in a parcel of land located in Douglas as shown on the attached locust map marked as Exhibit A for conservation and/or recreational purposes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, in pursuant to 301 CMR 51.071B, the Douglas Board of Selectmen agree to waive the 120-day notice period required by said section as to the parcel of land approximately 10 acres in the Town of Douglas as shown on Exhibit A.
Some moves?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that?
The only thing I'd ask is that our representative from DCR go back to what the powers to be and let him know how supportive Rupert Douglas has been—
Oh, you're all about it.
—of recent years. Thank you for helping the state park and unrelated to DCR necessarily, put our grants.
My pleasure, and I hope to see you again soon. All right, thank you. Thank you all.
You're welcome. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So next is to open the warrant for ATM and STM and possible votes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And now we're on to discussion on selectmen workshop, and I am going to hand this over to the Vice Chairman, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
So we went to the annual MMA—what do you call it—meeting up in Boston, and attended one of the workshops. It was an interesting workshop. It was how to improve working relationships between the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator. And it was an interesting thing. It was—I think it would be beneficial for us as a group. So one of the panelists, or whatever you prefer to them as, was Jeff Nutting, which is the interim town administrator in Oakdale. He was in Franklin for 17 years. He's been about 40 years on it. Julie from Auburn was on it. Bud from Sandwich was on it, and he retired now, Mel. I don't remember his last name.
Mel Clutner.
Clutner from—he retired from Brooklyn. So combined, they had like 120, 130 experience, I guess. But they had a lot of good points in different things that they did. So then I reached out to Jeff, and—well, first I reached out to Julie, and she—and she told me that Jeff does these workshops, that we can sit down as a group. We're not deliberating on anything. We're just—we're trying to work out a path that we can all work together in the same—same direction. So I found it interesting. That's why I reached out to Kevin, the chairman, to discuss this. I think it may be beneficial to us. The cost of it, it's about $700 and $900 for it. I checked to make sure that we had funding in our budget before I went any further with it. Talked briefly with the town administrator about it. So if—anybody's interested in it, we reached out to Jeff. He'll send a sample questionnaire in there. That could be changed around a little bit. He does that just to get some background thoughts, so he can better... It's typically done off out-of-town hall, just for a neutral area to do it. That was his suggestion. What was the library and senior center, or something like that?
It's funny to see this. When I first got on the board, I didn't call it a workshop. I called it a retreat, and...
Well, that's how it was referred to, I mean, a retreat. Somebody said workshop, so I think Jeff said it, so...
You take offense to the word retreat.
I take offense, I take it in, I buy it, Jim.
The Open Meetings Law is still in effect.
Yeah, it has to be openly advertised. Yep, absolutely.
I think any training is good, or workshops, or retreats, or however you want to look at them. But it gives you a chance to look at something a little differently. I'm not opposed to it at all.
No, and get away from things and be able to think about issues that you—put aside.
Just to get us all on the same page, it's sort of the last couple of years. I'm trying to figure out a direction of what we're doing. You guys have met together a little bit longer. I just figured this might be an opportunity to get us focused in one direction. It seems like—I—I referenced it, Kevin, we're like a spider. All these legs are going in different directions. If we combine our efforts, I think we could do a lot of good things. So that—that's what the goal is behind it, just to get us focused.
Thought I would have as cognizant of this four of us. Maybe we hold off until we have five.
That's not that far away.
No.
A couple of things, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
To be responsive to selectmen voting, but also address something. This is not precipitated by any harsh need to have it. This is—
No.
This is a—a positive step forward.
It's a desire that people get a team effort.
I would strongly recommend the board vote to do, because you really should do it, you know, every two years. And whenever there's any kind of turnover on the board, and to sort of reset, you know, where your starting place is. There are a number of things that are traditionally not done, because, you know, the board's been very stable for a long time. So there's no onboarding package, that, you know, this is what your full scope of authority is. Here are some things that we voted on recently. Here are the initiatives of the town. When a new select board member is elected, they're largely on their own to educate themselves. And that can be a process of reaching out, asking lots of questions, being very active. And that's all necessary anyway. But there are some of those things could have been set upfront in expectations later on. Would have been a lot easier. So it's—it's a fantastic idea, and I would more than happy to participate. You are in the process of renewing my contract. This is a good way to also set goals and arrive at consensus around major policy initiatives. In the past, the board was largely dealing with the regular routine business of the town, because there wasn't much to engage on policy-wise, because you were really kind of in a static situation. The budget was very small and stable. There wasn't a lot of change to the landscape of the town. With all of the change that's coming, you will now have opportunity to write a lot more policy, and those policies will have a lasting effect on the good of the town for many, many years. So to put those things front and center in a context that's not a business meeting, where we're watching the clock to make sure we're not—have a little bit more time to discuss things openly would—would probably really help everyone. So I'm anxious to participate. I don't know that waiting—you know, by then it'll be May. We'll get into the summer. A town meeting will be over, so in a way, we will have cleared the decks, and you'll have a new member on board. But ideally, you would talk about how to bring a new member on, so that that new person who was elected in May would have the—would be the first person that you—you educate, or however you want to, in the new way, so...
Okay. A couple of things that Tim sat through that same—how I sat through. It was interesting, the different approach from the four different administrators that were sitting up there. And Julie, one thing that she—she says, every election, she would have...
Is that Julie from Auburn?
Yes.
She would have...
Retired.
Good.
Call the selectmen, review, and sign a code of conduct. It's not what the paper's written on, realistically, but it's reminding you of different things, and how you're supposed to act, and what you can do, what you shouldn't do, and things like that. She—for herself, she would—every new selectman, she would find out how they like communication. Some people like phone calls, some like texts, some like emails, some don't like anything. No, but she—she would ask that and figure it out. It was interesting to listen to her, the different procedures that she had in place. One thing that we don't do is—we have all these policies. We may want to pick through them a few at a time and just see if—are they still relevant? Some of the old ones that we have on there, we should be looking at and see if they need to be tweaked or changed or discussed, or just left alone. Anyways, I don't want to keep track of myself. We want to go home tonight.
Thank you.
So that's all I can say about the this workshop, so...
Feeling funny tonight, but if we—I noticed it's 3:00 to 3:30. If we get to 6:00, do we get a sandwich?
Yeah.
I think you're obligated to get one and eat it.
Talking about policy. No, I—I personally think it's best—I think it'd be a good discussion for the newest member to attend, but I'll know when to roll through.
You want to make the motion, huh?
I'm not sure of the date, so we need to put a date in, or just...
Well, no, it's just to inquire. So the next step would be to reach out to Jeff Nutting. He's going to turn around and through Matt. Everything would go through Matt anyways, and he would distribute the question he has to us.
At least give the process.
When I was talking to Jeff Nutting, I said, "So how's this work? Am I supposed to get ahold of all..." "No, no, 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 violation of open meeting law." You would give it to the town administrator. He would facilitate getting the information to us.
So I would move that we move forward with the workshop recommendation as presented and discussed this evening. Enough definition?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
The only thing I would add to it is, a new member comes up, it would be helpful for that new member, just—you guys are a lot more seasoned, to help them get up to speed. That's what I do on the Senate Board that I'm on. Capitol, I try to help him, we get new members on there, just to bring them up and give them as much information as possible. Not tell them what to do, but just give them the information, so that they can become a better member. It's worked well, so... This has been a struggle for the two of us. You guys are used to it, and it just—nothing other than you were just complacent with the way you were. And they went, "Okay." Coming in, it's an extremely difficult thing. It takes a tremendous amount of effort, little ruffling of little feathers along the way. But I don't think a lot of that was necessary. I think some guidance from you guys, or the sitting members of the board that get experience, that helped the new member go a long way.
We could invite any announced candidates for Board of Selectmen if we're going to have it. Let's give them a chance.
Yeah, the other topic, Mr. Chairman, if I may, is we've talked for years about a financial dashboard, which is that quick and dirty, four or five pages, things you need to know about town finances and budgeting and capital budgeting. A time series that's updated every single year, so you can tell the financial position of the town. Would probably go a long way to helping somebody understand how things work. So we should discuss what goes into that.
Because I'm so heavily involved in Capitol, I automatically go to, "So what's the funding source?" But that's a very important question that we need to understand, what we're going to pay for. Anyways, back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any further further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. So we are on to the ARPA discussion, where we'll be going over the Fire Department Building Security, Amendment to the Fire Department HVAC approved request for 117, and Water and Sewer Project Discussion with Bob Sullivan, and possible votes.
So, Mr. Chairman, on the first point, this is in the same situation as number one on your agenda. Ian, just so that everybody following at home knows the background. The Open Meetings Act requires notice be provided when votes are taken, and that parties may be heard. There are topics you may discuss in executive session. The protected information can be discussed in executive session. Vote needs to be in public after you've heard—have a chance to hear from other people. A failure of notice is fatal, so in other words, no vote taken improperly will bind anyone ever. So you might as well just do a quote-unquote "do-over" and seal the deal, and just make sure it's all done right. That's Rich Bowen's advice. You know, January 17th, I remember, well, Lisa wasn't here. I was so sick I could barely see straight. We got—we pushed through the agenda. We got out of here, was still very late. I think, you know, we just did that as a matter of course, and didn't think it through, and...
We were out of control, board.
Mistakes happen. No, no, mistakes happen, and that's just—that's why.
We were wrong.
But this is a little bit different in the sense that there is—you have already discussed the sensitive information around the different security concerns in the building, and there is funding lined up in ARPA. So we're just asking that you revote that allocation of ARPA funds. Do you have it in here?
The $15,000.
$15,000?
Make a motion that we earmark $15,000 of our ARPA money to the Fire Department Securities Doors and Windows Project, discussed.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then the amendment to the FD HVAC?
So in your packet, there is a proposal from McCritchy. This is the project proposal for the HVAC design. Where's his number? Crying out loud. There it is. Page 2, under subsection 11, there's a paragraph. "Our fee for the above-scope of engineering services is $30,550. Includes standard AIA expenses." Does not include the cost of electronic bidding. So you're going to notice that that's very close to exactly 10% of the projected project cost of $300,000. The fee was not... The fee was not in the $300,000, that was the cost to do the project. So the way this is going to roll out is, McRitchie needs to finish the HVAC design in order to locate all the appliances and where things are going to connect power. Then the electrical engineers from McRitchie will finish the electrical upgrade design for the entire building. And the two projects will take place simultaneously. I've asked that McRitchie identify portions of the project for HVAC that may be broken out and done separately in advance of the electric, electrical work because it doesn't tie to electric or won't be a major disruption to the electrical design. We are especially concerned about sequestering and removing contaminants from a specific storage area where we store all the turnout gear, notwithstanding the fact that it's washed and dried and well-maintained, it's still not perfect and needs to be in a closed space that both has makeup air and exhaust air and that proper pressure is maintained inside that space. I believe we could do a lot of that work before we worry about upgrading the electrical service and doing all the rest of the electricals. So that's how that project will roll out. But we, I'm looking for the, what's going to round it up to $31,000 additional ARPA funds so that we can sign the agreement with McRitchie and get them going.
We're already committed to the rest of it, so.
I must have a motion at that.
Motion to encumber another $31,000 of the infamous ARPA funds.
Influenced. For?
The design work for the HVAC to McRitchie.
Second. All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So now we have the Water Sewer Projects Discussion with Mr. Sullivan.
So I believe, since I'm wicked good at math, and I just did some quick math, your remaining balance is $1,625,416.40 if Bob promises not to spend it all in one place.
Now, that doesn't include if we were going to do anything for the transfer station.
No, you didn't vote on that, so this is just what you voted.
You need to at least leave back the price of a cheeseburger or something.
So if I don't promise, does that mean there might be more?
Oh, man. See, he's talking to Gene too much, he's getting way too much practice.
More is never an option. If you ask for more, then we're going to double the, that you said found money, and then, God help you.
Mr. Chairman, before we jump into Bob, one question I want to ask the town administrator. On this list that we have, on the same night that we did the HVAC, the one right above it, would that have been in the executive session as well, or is it going on now?
School security, is that one?
Yes. I think we did that in the executive session, too.
That sounds right.
Yeah. So we may want to revote that one as well.
We'd have to post that, though, to vote on it, wouldn't we?
Yes, but nothing's going to go out to bid for a little while on this, so let's just post it for March.
Put that on the next.
The infamous...
I just seen the date for the same one.
Exactly. The infamous January 17th meeting.
Yeah.
That we all went back.
Take off another day.
No more days off for Lisa, that's...
We didn't vote that out of the executive...
No, I don't believe so.
Getting a little careless with that.
It's all my fault.
No, it isn't.
It is, I'm taking all the heat.
We have responsibilities, too.
He's going to be full of holes by the end of the night.
Nope, I just let her, so I'm taking a lot of it.
Okay, so Bob is like $300 an hour, so...
Yeah, and I'm all down with Bob.
What do you have, Bob?
I just thought you guys wanted to go over the projects that we've already discussed and if you had questions and needed answers.
Well, the only question that I have is, considering you would be the water sewer expert, is this kind of what you do?
Yeah.
Knowing that we cannot do both projects at the same time, which, if it was completely sitting in your lap, which one weighs more favorably to get done up front in your, between the two of them?
Between the water and the sewer on Main Street or Depot Street? So those three projects that I had discussed.
Sorry about that. So between the three of them, like if it was just water...
There was a little confusion, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
There was a little confusion between the Main Street portion, and I don't think everybody realized at the beginning that it was, that was all the 1.5, it was just for the sewer line.
Just the sewer.
And the water line was 7.5, I believe, up to the common.
So the original water discussion, originally, when I first came to Capitol, over the years, I have kind of broke it down to do it in sections. And originally, I think, just to make it kind of something that we could swallow, with smaller projects, originally it started from Franklin Street and went to basically the booster station, and then from the booster station to Riddell Road, and then from Riddell up to the Town Common. But then there was potential funding coming through the state with potential principal forgiveness, so I packaged it, a complete package, and went through our engineers to look at what it would take to do all of Main Street, all the way to Camp Meeting on Southwest Main.
South West, yeah.
Because that, from South, from Camp Meeting beyond, that's already new ductile iron. But in between Camp Meeting and Franklin Street, it's still the old cast iron line. And between that section, we've had approximately 12 breaks. Then that also included going up Church Street, around Northwest Main, and finishing that loop that we had started to do 2050, or somewhere around that. So there's another 550 feet or so to finish that loop, but that was to replace all of that and do the loop. So it wouldn't be 7.5 to go from Franklin Street to the Highway Department. It's about a mile, so I would guess it was maybe a little over $2 million to do that section. So it depends on how far you want to go. I mean, my biggest concern and priority would be Main Street, basically to the common, to the, basically where the tank line is. Because of those breaks, so if we secured that line and made it more reliable, less likely to break, that would eliminate the concerns of, you know, we get a break on that line, we lose fire protection for all of downtown and the new buildings that we're working on, doing all these other upgrades to make possible. So that's my biggest priority, I would say, based on the water department needs. The sewer, I mean, since I began working here, there's always been talk about getting sewer up to the Town Common. That was always, I think, one of the comments on, a former board member was, "Get me a flush toilet on the common," and then we'll talk about, I think it was MTE money at the time. So knowing that that's a concern, you know, I've looked at it over the years, trying to look at it from a business standpoint, and it just never made financial sense for me to run sewer up there. I just won't pick up enough customers to cover that. It'd take over 100 years to try to get that money back. And at that point, we'd be replacing whatever we put in anyway, so financially, it just doesn't make sense. But, you know, when I brought these up, those discussions as to what the town's priorities are, if the town's priority was a public safety complex and expanding, adding the police, expanding the fire, adding highway all into that complex, it would be too big to have a septic system. So now it becomes a matter of making a viable project that you guys wanted to move forward with. So that's the way I looked at it, was, this is a good opportunity so that it's not rate payer or taxpayers essentially paying to expand this. That's why I thought this may be a good use of ARPA funds. The other project was Depot Street. That project, you know, when the initial ARPA funds kind of instructions, I'll call it, came out, it was to solve issues. One of the issues is, this is probably the main road that we get water quality complaints, dirty water, looks like your coffee, that you raise coffee, whatever that is, almost looks like nice tea.
If you had to do that, no, I don't even want to drink it.
Anyway, I could save you money.
Drink the water.
So we've gotten, typically anytime there's something that we have major flows down Main Street, Gilboa Street, that tends to be the areas that we have issues where we're running heavy flows, this section of road gets the water turned up. So it's because it's old cast iron pipe, it's tuberulated, and that rapid flow going back and forth causes that to stir up and it breaks stuff off of the inside of the pipe. So that fit the bill of use for ARPA funds. It is a concern that every time we do have heavy flows and all these big buildings, they're going to be doing annual hydrant, their sprinkler system, flushing their lines and all that stuff. So every time one of those happens, it's going to cause a discoloration coming down this road. We used to get water quality issues on Gilboa Street, we've resolved that problem now, so this would be the next, the next one that we would have discoloration issues. And it would, and, you know, all along, I had looked at trying to get a new line coming into this building. If we ever replaced the main coming up here, that would be what I would include in part of the project. Right now, you have a four-inch line coming in, that's for your fire protection and your domestic, typically you separate them, you don't want your domestic water coming off of your fire service line. So I wanted to separate those and run a bigger main in, so you'd have adequate fire protection here.
Neither one of those can be done for 1.5?
Correct.
Right, so to Mike's question, where do we get the rest of the money?
So my guess would be, we would probably do a borrowing through the Water Sewer Department to fund the additional. Because these are upgrades to the water and sewer infrastructure that's existing, it's not expanding. The sewer one's the only one that's not really expanding, or that is expanding.
That would be, would it be existing monies that we're borrowing?
It would depend on which project and where it came in when we went up to the bidding process. So this also doesn't include the engineering, so that would be another thing that I'd have to go to the commissioners to, to look at funding the engineering portion through the water sewer.
How much would you say is to run the water line up to the common, like you're talking about?
Up to the common? I'd have to look at the footage, it's probably another 1,800 feet, maybe, somewhere around there.
Because that's what you need to do, is get to the water tank, you come all the way down, so you eliminate all these breaks that you have, you know?
For the majority of them, yeah. Another 750? Paul Parker?
Yeah, so what's the total on that? I won't hold you to it.
Just under 3, 2.75?
You won't? I'll hold you to it.
What's that?
I said, "I'll hold you to it."
So that with the sewer line, you look at about $4.5 million? So we, if we have, you get through the process of evaluating these buildings, it could be a potential that you're going to need that anyways, would you add that to the funding of the, of the buildings?
As part of the project for them.
As part of the project, yeah.
If we didn't get the additional funding, for whatever reason, the money that we, is the money, how would you allocate the money so the town would get some benefit from the ARPA funds alone as a first stage?
I'm not sure.
But what I'm saying is there, do you get a benefit if you're spending a million, we're talking a million and a half for that?
Sewer?
Yeah. Where would you apply that, that the town would get some benefit from and didn't get additional funds? No project would work unless we get additional funds? I'm thinking of the people complaining about the discolored water, et cetera, if we did the first, or it's not capable of splitting the project up that way. I'm just trying to segment it a little bit.
Right. I mean, like I said, the sewer doesn't really, isn't going to show a benefit other than making other town projects viable.
Well, that's, that in and of itself is valuable.
Right. So that, and that's why I said that was, it seemed like a good use of those funds. The other two projects, I mean, we're going through, and one of the, one of the other grants that we received was the asset management for the water and we, asset management for the sewer. So that's going to evaluate all of the infrastructure and kind of come up with a plan as to, you know, so you can budget long-term to figure out replacement schedules for those. So through that process, I'm sure those two lines would be probably the highest priority through that process, too. So then it would just be a matter of having that package presented to the commissioners and coming up with a game plan on how we're going to fund moving forward. But time-wise, that's not going to fit within the highway project, so.
Has the, have the commissioners weighed or debated what we're debating right now?
Not to this level. We've had discussions multiple times, they're aware of the projects that need to be done. I think there's a benefit to, if we were doing the water and sewer together, you know, like I said, we know it's a, we know it's a priority and it needs to be done. And if we did it together, we would gain the benefit of, you know, full mill and overlay as opposed to trench patch and just one or the other. And then it would kind of share that cost, essentially, putting it across two different projects as opposed to trying to do a full mill and overlay for one particular project. But if we're only doing one or the other, it doesn't make sense to do a full mill and overlay, it would be a trench patch. Depending on the contract of the one to bid, I'm sure you guys are all aware of the difference that could be. Although I will say, I will expect that if it's a temporary trench, I'll require milling and patching the way that the first project was done. We'll just add that to our bid package when we do it this time.
And the reason why I keep gravitating towards Depot Street, we can go back to 2016 when we tried to talk about going upstairs, and we did the code review and all that other stuff, just kind of do it without Frankl's. I don't think that's any way around, especially now where it's changed the storage for the so many years. It was kind of a, much harder argument than it was before when I was educational. How old that packed itself?
It was done in sections, so some of it was early on, and I think...
Early 1900s?
Yeah, some of it was early 1900s, I think from here up was like 19, late 1940s, 1950s, somewhere in that range.
Was installed by the Romans.
If you have to like that, like 70 years.
Correct.
How far do you want to go again, if you up Depot?
So the way that I wanted to see the project go on Depot was to go all the way up Depot, cross over that right away at the end that crosses over the rail trail, and then come out onto Maple and connect over to Martin. So that intersection of Martin and Maple, at that intersection, that's where the water main ends, but that's a long dead end from right over here at the Y here, all the way up to the end, so anytime there's any issue here, right?
Solves another problem.
It resolves another issue there, that, you know, we would have that loop so that if we had an issue down here, they don't all lose water up there.
Whether we like it or not, we have to fix Culver at Depot Street that has started to fall.
And that would be included in the cost of this project?
No, I think we could leverage Chapter 90, would be an appropriate use of Chapter 90 to do that.
Probably $500,000 to fix that.
But I would think it would be a good time to incorporate that into the project.
Yeah, if you're disturbing the whole road, you might as well go for it, yeah.
Sounds like Depot Street makes the most sense, for now.
Well, well, long-term, if we don't utilize this whole building at some point, we're going to be talking about going in a different direction. We're investing a ton of money into this building, we don't use the 60% of it.
And I don't think anything you build nowadays is going to be as good as this building, structure-wise.
He's so mean when he says it looks like my coffee.
This building properly taken care of will last at least another 100 years. This building probably taken care of will last at least another 100 years.
I'm just gonna come down here.
Make it last 100 years, that just saves us like about 100 million today's dollar.
Yeah.
Any thoughts, Mr. Bonner?
I have no issue with what you're saying.
That's what I do.
I agree with you 100%.
Bring people together, to build consensus. No, I, I mean, my, initially, I thought Depot was the way to go. Um, yeah, I am cognizant that we've got buildings down there that are gonna strain the system a little bit, probably maybe a lot. So, I'm sitting here actually thinking that we can't make a wrong decision, I just don't know.
If it helps, would kinda tip the scales for me, Tim, was the idea of being able to layer some of that water sewer project into the building project once we actually have one.
Like, you have to layer it in, or the, uh-
To his point.
Water sewer commissioners are only going for one borrowing project versus two. Cause if nothing is done, they still have these problems, they have to be addressed at some point, so this is an opportunity to take something off their plate, where this one would just about fund this whole thing. Versus, it's all gonna give you 30, 30% without Main Street, at four and a half, five hundred.
Yeah. I think the play is to support the building.
You wanna make a load up next?
Well, having said that, does it make sense for us to have a joint meeting with the water commissioners?
Yeah, I would think that we need to get them involved to get a consensus from them.
Okay.
Can we get them potentially on our next meeting?
Can put them like at the top before there's another round. 200 and so on, we won't be able to get a pencil shot.
There was another 41 ARPA request that just came.
There was?
No. You looked nervous for a second.
No, if that's the case, it was the lights that told us we were coming on.
Alright, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna skip over number seven because the meetings are not, uh, the minutes are not ready, and I am going to turn this over to Mr. Woljak for his administrator's report. I'm gonna ask that the vice chairman run the meeting for a couple of minutes in my absence, cause I have to follow up on a work thing.
Ready. It's unusual to have a couple of minutes.
We have seconds, we're waiting on them.
It's basketball season.
Here's to follow up on what I missed, what he said, cause I was-
It's, uh, ready for your report?
No, no, we got, uh, that was, uh-
You skipped that.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Number eight.
Thank you. I paid attention.
Mr. Chairman, an update on the budget process. My goal is to have a budget, um, close to the finish line by the end of the weekend, early next week, and it's gonna take a lot of doing to get us there. We met all day today with all the department heads to review the compensation reform plan and the new tables and the impact it would have on each and every one of them, as well as the people they supervise. The meetings went a little long, so we had to push, how many tomorrow, three?
Three.
So, it'll take a couple of days to catch up with the feedback we've gotten from those folks. I'm losing my voice, cause I've been talking all day and saying a lot of the same things over and over, um, to introduce the topic to people. That's delicious water, I can tell, over there. The bottom line is, is this, really, when we started the budget this year, we had a number of assumptions that were built in from the forecast from last year, so things we didn't do last year that we thought we would be able to squeeze in this year. Adding a, a new, uh, full-time worker at Highway, there were some initiatives we were gonna take, we were gonna make a large increase to the legal services budget, so that Town Council, we thought, maybe we could expand the scope of the contract for the flat rate, or go out to bid, or, you know, just make some change there so that the overall accessibility of our council to our various boards and commissioners would increase. Some of those initiatives were all taken together along with the police cruisers, cause we're gonna be replacing two cruisers a year now for the next several years until the fleet is fully rotated out. The initial bid budget condition was a deficit of a little over $200,000. If you notice how I've been doing budgets for the last six years, that's typical, right? We, we usually have somewhere between 150,000 to $300,000 deficit, and we go through the budget process to whittle that down, uh, review, and if necessary or possible revise revenue estimates and come out to a balanced budget in the end, and we usually beat it, right? So, the next year, we have turnbacks and unanticipated revenues and all kinds of things that build up free cash. This year's a little bit different, because those cruisers are an immutable object, right? There's two, they're gonna cost about X. We increased, I increased the allotment in the budget to $115,000 for two cruisers. You either do it or you don't. So, that six-figure number is, is sitting there. It's not like I could nickel and dime the various different departments to get to that number. And on top of it all, we wanted to do compensation reform, and the initial budget estimate on that was a quarter million dollars. As I sit here tonight, the budget without compensation reform is a deficit around 30,000, 40,000 dollars. And I've gotten the program down to about 170,000, call it 175,000, before I get to any contractual employees, it's 175,000. So, we're in the red by about 200,000, but I've already taken out those 200 to get to almost balance, so that we can start to try to figure out comp reform. So, we will have some choices flagged in the budget document for the select board to approve or disapprove before we go to finance committee to get to balance, and it may take any number of devices that you might not typically approve or use to get to balance this year, based on a forecast that next year, some of the major buildings that are gonna be built are gonna be coming online, and we will have some significant new growth figure. I also know what's going on with free cash, right? So, we have an awful lot of money that is coming in this year that will close to free cash, not the least of which is the building permit for the warehouse at almost a million dollars, just for the shell. And then, we have an insurance settlement coming back, so, uh, coverage was approved for the damage that was done to the pump on Engine 3, so that repair is going to be, we funded it from the operating budget, we're gonna be reimbursed by Maya, so that will close to free cash. Uh, and then, of course, there's a surplus that I've mentioned several times in the health insurance fund that, that can come back over. So, we're not in a, in a pickle when it comes to accruing free cash, carrying it over to, hoping that it all gets certified for next fall. It's just that this year, which was the last year of the override period, the budget forecast that supported the override, was supposed to be a tight year, and it is, alright? So, like I say, I'll be, what I do every year is I keep a running tally of every single line item that I change, so that it usually fits on one page, so if you wanna see how we got from the forecast to the final balanced budget, all the changes that I had to make, and that should inform the conversation going forward about what could be restored, what needs to be taken in. I thought I would, are there any questions about the budget process, or where, where we think we stand?
When you say comp reform, how many employees are we looking at?
So, it's all of our non-union staff.
All?
Yeah, so, non-union, so that's mostly Town Hall, New York clerk positions, both at Highway and Fire Department, um, the call section of the Fire Department, so the call table, and now that, I already finished and presented to you months ago, you may wanna refresh your memory. That's already baked into the budget, so that part of it is already in, cause that's a seven and a half percent increase roughly, yonely. I wanna say 27 people, some of, quite a few are part-time, whose rate of pay is set through the comp table, so, about 17 managers and 10, 10 or more staff.
About right, yeah.
So, at the FinCom meeting, you indicated you might take comp reform up in two years?
I'm, would rather not, but if that becomes the way we have to do it, I'll have to figure out the formula. Town meeting can't bind a future town meeting, so we would have to just build it into the budget forecast and pledge to people that we're gonna do it. Uh, you know, I'd like to think that we can swing 175,000 dollars in this budget, I really would like to think that.
This is the last year that we, you know, supplement a comp reform like that.
This is, so this is the last year of the settlement of the teachers' contract, so this is year two of the three years, and this is the last year we'll give the school department any money.
So, that would happen here?
No, it just won't be there, that's free cash.
No, I know that, I know. It'll be back into the free cash, we won't be taking-
There'll be no further drawdowns on free cash, yeah. Uh, but we did pledge to the school department that we would keep them at 2% year over year. That's, where we've been is 1%, so 2. What, it's hurting us this year, Norfolk Aggie, we anticipated last year that we have five seniors, the five seniors will graduate, and next year would be, you know, a smaller student body. Those five are graduating, but now Norfolk tells us that four people are applying. Traditionally, the kids who apply get in and they all go. So, really only a net change of one, but guess what, tuition went up, and then transportation for Norfolk Aggie went up by 19%.
So, it's gonna be more?
So, it's, it's, there is no benefit, and there's about a 40, 50,000 dollar increase there. Our own school bus contract's going up about 6%. Those numbers are all bigger than our rate of increase in revenues, so that's, that's the trouble.
The BVT assessment, did that go up?
I do not know yet, and that's a wild card, right?
And we usually find that out like days before.
Actually, we actually usually know by now.
There is a letter in the NOB's.
Okay.
Yeah.
From Norfolk.
But they're not gonna, from Norfolk, but BVT, that letter, I know what it says, it says that we're not gonna tell you yet. So, their, their public budget hearing is in middle to late March, so we won't actually have a BVT number until the end of March. And that's a, you know, I haven't factored in at something like 4%, but it could be way more than that, and it could actually be less.
It's never less.
Well, the thing is, you know, it's by student, right? So, we've had this bubble of, the kids who matriculated and went and gone through BVT, and now they're starting to graduate out, and there are fewer kids applying and going. This last year, there were fewer, so.
I think that's a direct result of the operation over at the high school.
Yeah, they're doing a substantially much better job marketing Douglas High School to the kids.
And that's all it really ever took, yet we didn't do it.
Yeah.
They had to diversify what was being offered, too, and they have added some new programs.
They have, but I think the strategy has changed.
Yeah.
You know, the former superintendent's strategy was try to meet BVT head-on and offer the kinds of things that BVT offers here. It may or may not have worked, but now the strategy has shifted towards emphasizing what we already offer here and what is being successfully given to the kids, and it's working, it seems to be working quite well, so.
It's a shift for me, too. That doesn't always work.
We'll see. So far, it's, it's a good environment. I thought I would play, as I promised you, the two examples, just cause I wanted on the public record of what the public radio, uh, excuse me, public safety radio improvement project has meant for the town, cause you may not listen to your scanner, you may not hear this, a couple of you do, but, so this is bad radio, let's see if it plays.
Yeah, it's really bad radio, you can't hear it.
It's so bad, you can't hear it at all.
Can't hear the disturbances.
Breaker 19?
Yep. I don't understand.
Car 54?
38.
So, this, this is evidence that you should check this before we go in the meetings.
There is audio, cause I did listen, just the volume.
It may just be challenging to get it to come.
It's about as much information as the minutes.
Wow. Wow. Leave Stephanie alone, she's doing great.
He's staring at me, not stuff.
Oh, wow.
I had to do all my own coffee, so, oh, no, that's why she taped it to the-
Lisi, you do not need to take that.
Should've made sure that the, uh-
Matt, you would've been kicked out of AP club.
They wouldn't let me in, everybody kicked me out, you know?
Tell the son of a truck to trailer driver when I-
You're gonna have to join the debate team now.
Breaker 19?
What were the two cops named, Car 54, one was like Tootie or something like that?
I think so. I used to watch that. My father, I watched all the old time TV shows, I used to watch those.
Just checking the output.
For the folks at home, we're about to see Bad Radio, take two.
12 to 5, 12 to 2.
12 to 1.
But this second still works, or possible illegal burn. Uh, just want to check that, not sure the number.
So, I don't know if you can tell what that's, what's going on.
Illegal burn, I caught that.
Go again, you're unravable.
It was, Tim.
12 to 1.
Now, imagine being at a fire, trying to talk to the other hand, and seeing that.
12 to 1.
Beautiful, cool.
Yeah? You don't know what they tap for, and what they're doing. Sounded like dispatch was in the laundry room.
I'm guessing that you're arriving at hospital?
12 to 1.
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 More recording, reporting for them.
Oh, that's what's making it worse.
No, but-
See 1, 2?
The screen isn't right, so I'm, I'm really, you know, nothing ever works. Can't make a small one.
Had you been using Avaya Spaces?
He wasn't worried anything.
12 to 1.
This is good.
It would've crashed.
This is good.
12 to 1.
53 something quite high, 20 actual wood frame structure, something short for the activity, we have a lot.
Much better. Much better.
It's much better. You're actually picking up the fire alarm beeping in the background, that's-
(inaudible).
So I don't know how effective that was, but I think the point would be it's much, much cleaner. They can hear each other, everybody's- My kingdom for an AV room that works. But anyway, I don't think the point's lost. The first recording, you heard a lot of static, you heard the dispatch, mostly the dispatcher saying, "Say that again, you're unreadable." So all that is, is time wasted. So the crew that's responding is trying to figure out what's going on, the dispatcher is trying to relay the necessary information, they can't hear each other. In the second example, yeah, there's background noise because everybody's microphone's going to pick up what's going on around them, so. In that case, the alarm panel is sounding, you can hear it steadily strobing in the background, but you can hear the voices clearly and people are communicating and it's a very effective and efficient communication. That was why the project was a priority to do because sometimes in the 15 seconds, 20 seconds that you're trying to figure out who's saying what and where are they and where are they going and can you say that address again, you're wasting a lot of time. And if the address is wrong or you heard it wrong and you took the wrong turn, you're going in the wrong direction, there's lots of things that can happen when the communication isn't clear.
Every second counts.
So this will show up in the budget on an ongoing basis because there are some operational costs, right? So there's a maintenance contract that goes along with the system every year, that we have some subscriptions and some rentals of space on the tower in Webster, which is already in the budget, it's already being paid, so that's not an increase, it's just going to be there forever. So as long as we're on the tower, we'll pay at least $800 a month. But overall, the product is almost done. Last week, they finished the quote-unquote "cut over," so in other words, they took the old console, the old 911 position and replaced it with the new one after training So that's encouraging to have that, get that far down. Tomorrow, the Building Facilities Committee will mark up the proposals, the RFQ responses that we got for long-term architect services. We got five responses, I've reviewed three of them, they are actually very high quality. I have little doubt that you will have a hard time picking from the three finalists. I don't know that getting the three finalists will be hard for the committee to do, but I think you guys will have a lot to think about. So the way I want to approach this, the same way as we approached it last time, I will go through it, I'll make some notes, try to draw your attention to certain things in their firm resumes and their presentations, but it's entirely up to you to do the scoring system and arrive at a consensus on who you want to hire. But the sooner we get them started, the more likely it is that by November, we'd at least have conceptual drawings, which is the goal for a highway model. Are there any questions about my report to this point?
Nope.
If there is nothing to ask, I'm going to stop right there. I think those are the three major things I'd like to, sorry for the quality, but I thought it would be simple.
Could you email those just for fun?
Yeah.
All right. Do we have any open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting? Seeing as none. Before we get to requesting Tim for a motion, did we get Brian, was Brian Mazer going to come to executive session?
Haven't been able to get a hold of him.
Haven't been able to get a hold of him.
Do we still need the executive session?
That would be, Matt, do you have any issues with moving executive session to the next regularly scheduled meeting so we can get Mr. Mazer?
No.
Anybody on the board have any objections to this?
So extending the meeting?
That was the only thing that we were going to talk about, right?
That was it.
So he's not here.
I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we gloss over number 10 and move to number 11, which is to adjourn.
Second. Excellent. So motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.